Call the meeting to order. Everyone please rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. This meeting is now open to the public for comment for any items that are on the agenda. Hearing none?
I guess I didn't do roll call, so now we'll go to roll call.
Thank you.
I'm a little rusty. It's been a couple of weeks.
Mr. Sicala?
Here.
Mr. Mandela?
Here.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Here.
Mrs. Dye?
Here.
Mrs. Burke?
Here.
I assume Mrs. Dye will no committee reports since we've been...
Not this time. I know you were all hoping, but it hasn't been anything. It's been quiet.
Well, from everybody to the meeting, I guess at our last meeting I lied and said our next meeting was going to be at the end of August, but here we are in the middle of July.
So do we get comp day now?
It's a floating topic.
Tonight we have a special presentation for the board regarding the proposal to dedicate the Cedar Grove High School Press Box in honor of Coach Arnie Berg. Mr. Featherman, are you gonna start off?
Ready.
Let's hear it.
Great. Well, we couldn't be more excited to have a special group of people with us tonight. I see Christine and Bill Gregory from the Cedar Grove High School Alumni Association here with us, and Jimmy McAndrew and Darius Ellipuchin, and Larry Winner is here as well, Class of 65, well represented. What we'd like to do tonight is present to the board and to the public their vision for how they'd like to honor their Coach Berg. Your Coach Berg and our Coach Berg, I guess. Every Panther is Coach Berg. And so what you see there on the easel, if you can see it from here, is sort of the rough sketch of what their vision is. So at this time, Jimmy, would you like to take over?
In the back is another sketch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, my mic's not working. It's a sketchy thing. Do it, Jimmy, do it.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
She didn't mean to interrupt like that. I'm Jimmy McAndrew with the high school, grade school here. Glad to see you guys. Happy to report and work for them all, thank you. Let's hope it goes that way for everybody. Ready?
Absolutely.
Here's hoping.
You know, Coach Berg, Panther's first coach, was just that. He set up the athletic department, set up all the school athletics. He was admired and revered by the students, and he was a bit out there, visionary, took steps that weren't normal.
Sorry to interrupt you. Could you just go to the microphone for the community? Because we're live. Thank you.
Okay. One of the interesting characteristics of his tenure was that we were in the suburban conference. The suburban conference was a difficult conference of the day. We played big schools like Milburn, Summit. We actually even scrimmaged and beat Passaic Valley. We were a little school, but we were good because, one reason, we had a great coach. You know, his wrestling program set a national record, which is still a national record. He was a member of that team, Larry. They were 12 and 0, 12 pins, 60 points, 60-0 over Paquannick High School. National, state, and school record. Not that anybody remembers, but guys like Larry. He was from Caldwell, New Jersey. He attended Boston University. You know, both his life and his tenure at Cedar Grove High School were short. He was dedicated, intelligent, extremely smart, focused, creative teacher and coach. As I mentioned, he had the foresight to change Cedar Grove High School in a lot of different ways, brought new and innovative ideas to the school, particularly in football that I recall greatly, which also helped pay the college bills, which was very good for my family, at least for a while. And his impact was way beyond a normal coach. It's now 50 years later, and we're back to commemorate Coach Arnie Berg, to thank the town, the great education, the good start we got here at Cedar Grove High School, paid many dividends to many of my classmates. So tonight we're seeking your approval of the displays, the identification of the press box, which you have previously looked at and approved the concept, but here are the facts and figures. This diagram depicts it. In your booklet, there's a variety of diagrams, different iterations along this line, and in the very back, there's a larger sketch to kind of give you even the colors. I would tell you that the display itself, it's underneath the soffit of the press box. The press box photo is also in the booklet, so you can get a feel for that. It goes between the soffit and the windows and stretches the length of the press box starting at the door edge. It'll be illuminated with the 12-volt LED lights. The letters are hand carved into marine-grade plywood and filled with gold flake. And what that means in the sign world is that the gold flake is durable, literally forever. There'll be no maintenance to this. It's a piece of furniture. It's built by a local sign manufacturer out of Verona, New Jersey. The joints are mitered. It's very skillful, so trying to depict or have you hear in words what this display looks like and the quality of the display. Very sharp, very cool. On the top, we'll have a 60-inch by 60-inch Panther. Your Panther, not my Panther. Your Panther is there much cooler than our Panther. Ours was kind of laying down. Yours is kind of going for it, right? So we're happy to say we're gonna use your Panther. And that Panther will be in the school colors of black and gold. It'll be situated on top of the press box and face out into the field and into the field Contributions for this have already started. We've received about 60 percent of the money we need. We will have all the money. We will not need any help with funding from anybody but the classmates. The press box and the display, and ideally, that's why we're here tonight and thank you for coming, we need your approval so we can get in the queue to have the displays manufactured. Again, these are handcrafted quality displays. He does one a month. Our queue is set for October. Will be in the production and out in October and installed in late October for ideally the 50th reunion of the Classes 64, which was the first graduating class from Cedar Grove High School. Your superintendent, Michael Featherman, has reviewed the site. He found it interesting and approved the idea without putting words in his mouth. So tonight we're hopeful, we seek your approval, to continue with the display as depicted and illustrated in the diagrams. If there are questions, we're happy to try to answer.
I can tell you that I'm familiar with the sign maker because he did the sign over my office building for me, so I'm very familiar with his work. And my sign was made by him in 2007, and it looks, if you look at it, you'd think it was made yesterday. So I can, I mean, it's... Yeah. Anybody have any questions? Comments?
More of a question for Mr. Featherman. You had said that you had reviewed this with the leadership team as well. Kind of what has been the feedback?
Feedback's been great. I mean, Mr. Mangili and I met with Mr. Gata, the head of Buildings and Grounds. We met with Coach Saddleock, the head football coach. We met with the attorney on the zoning board, who happens to be...
Yolting.
And of course, we've had tremendous support from the Alumni Association. So, I mean, from across the board, there's nothing positive things to say about moving forward and recognizing an educator such as Coach Berg in this manner. Anything we can do to sort of pay homage to someone who's meant so much to the students of this community, we're all for it.
Quick question. One of those groups, did you pull in the black and gold? I see like there's a sign or something. I couldn't, can't really make it out. Something with the Black and Gold Club?
Yes.
Initially, the Black and Gold Club was gonna be the entity we used to deposit contributions.
Oh, okay, okay.
And they approved it, and they love it.
Oh, okay, okay.
They had a tax compliance problem that made us, caused us to change to Cedar Grove Alumni Association.
We're a 501(c)(1) state, so advertising's...
Right, 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 right. Oh, okay, okay.
But are you adding these signs for the Black and Gold Club as well?
No.
Those are not part of it?
No.
Okay, all right. They obviously know and they're on board, like you've spoken with them and they're supportive as well. Okay. So these are not going here. Okay, got it.
And then when will we vote on this for approval? Our next meeting?
Absolutely. I mean, does that give us enough time? I mean, I know there's a time constraint here.
No, guys.
Tell us, Jimmy, tell us.
It's either yes or no, right? Given the two choices, it's no, only because we have to get in the queue with the sign maker so we can make the deadline of November 1st, which is the dedication evening on the 6th through 7th of November, is the dedication from the first graduate of the class to 50th reunion. That's what we're trying to, that's the time horizon.
Okay, well, it's not on the agenda for this evening. I don't know if it can be added or if it's something we want to add, or how we're gonna do that logistics.
In the past, we've accepted gifts that have been designed. Like, haven't we? We've accepted things that have already been put in place.
Retroactively, yes.
Right. Or not even, like, the smart board, FSA buys smart boards for the middle school. We accept their gift after they've bought it.
Right.
We didn't, and it's not retroactively, we just say thank you.
Well, no, meaning that we date, on the agenda, it's that it gives the date prior that they did.
Right, 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 right.
That's why I meant by retroactively.
So we're not approving the purchase, we're accepting the gift. I guess I'm saying, we don't have to approve this, we're gonna accept it.
For sure.
So we're not gonna, well, that's what we've done in the past.
That would be great.
Right, because we're not purcha, I mean, we're not...
We're not buying it. We're not approving the purchase of it. It's a gift. We're accepting the gift. So I don't think... And it was important to me that we did this publicly so that the public knew what was happening and could see it, so that it's not like happening and then we just accept the gift after the fact.
Right. Yeah, thank you. It's good that the public knows that we had a super educator and to get us at our stage in life excited about something. And you have a resource. I said that at class, you've got an Alumni Association. You've got people that care about Cedar Grove, even though I don't live here anymore. I say that to the rest of my classmates. We care. And I think it's a resource, not just our class. And by the way, Class of 65 is the first four-year class. 64 only went for three years. But I mean, we really care, and it's something I really think you as the stewards of Cedar Grove Education, it's a resource you should use. And it's something that every senior graduates from here, they're reminded, they have a home. It's here. The Alumni Association, strong and crisp. I know some schools are a source of, you know, field turf, any other of these things, academic enhancements, people who come back and talk. I mean, Jimmy McAndrew would be an inspiration for, you know, future leaders or anything else. So, you know, it's a whole idea of giving back, and I think this is just wonderful. And I also thought tonight, this is probably the eighth time I said the Pledge of Allegiance here in North End. Thank you very much.
I just have to ask, I mean, we've talked about it briefly amongst ourselves earlier, but this fixture, it is transferable, yes?
Yes.
Okay. So it's not something that has to, is permanently on there and we'll be able to move it if we have to at future times?
The best way to say it is permanently secured, it can be unsecured and moved to another spot or reused again, and reused in different places over and over.
Great, because I see the amount of money it is, and I, we have visions on the board. And, you know, I would hate for you to spend that and then it may not fit somewhere in the future that we're hoping it would fit. So, so I'm hoping you're reading between the lines of what I'm saying.
You learn better if you need to. You learn if you run out of time. So, when you're ready to move, just let us know.
Great. Because I love the idea, and I just wanted to, I want it to be here for a long time, so...
Now, it sends a message to students.
Absolutely.
It's going out. I mean, I can do something, look at these old people, what they're doing. They really learn something, and they're giving back. That giving back, that respect, there's peace in young children, in young people. They don't have that. They don't know that. It's school, everything exactly. It's taught to them. They're all on their mind credit and mindset, so that personal factor is there, so it's just, I think it's a reminder.
I totally agree.
You know, guys, our class too, 65, if nobody's heard from 64, so it's okay. The three classes, 4, 5, and 6 were really tight. But our class, we started a small scholarship back in the day, and we're gonna continue that scholarship now, and even though it's small money, 50 years, that scholarship does work. I don't think somebody actually read the papers right, because if my memory serves me right, they should have not invested in interest, they should have bought something else now. Next year's our 50th reunion, and I can assure you, we're gonna take care of that, too. You know, it's gonna go on for a very long time. It's gonna be perpetual.
That money is in your guardianship, because I turned it over me for 75, you did that, right, Larry?
Yes. There's one more thing I'd like to show you, just so we can just kind of get a feel for what we're talking about here. And this is from his high school yearbook. This is Coach Berg. You know, pictures worth a thousand dollars, right, guys?
Oh, yeah. It's always been so...
He didn't make it past 1976. Died very young, was an angel. He left teaching, gave a pretty large business success for Van Huse Insurance, went ahead and established a factory in Hong Kong. It's in the mid-'70s. I mean, that's like, guys, that's like real visionary, you know? Same way, it's hard to impart words 50 years ago what this man would do for you as an individual, but he would bring out the best in you. He would challenge you. He would, he would make strange contortions with his body and yell at you. And it worked. And it worked, you know? I can still remember, "Throw the ball, Jimmy!" Got it? Yeah, I got it. You know, so...
No, this is, this is exciting.
Yeah, it's very exciting.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here and, you know, doing all this, and we're very excited. Looking for, what was the date? November...
What is the exact date of that?
November 6th or 7th?
6th or 7th.
Looking forward to that.
We plan all, on all of this week.
Right. So, guys, I'm gonna take it that you're accepting the gift.
Right. That's what I was just, I wanted to just clarify, is that our next board meeting then, it will be on the agenda to accept the gift.
But you can move forward.
Yeah.
Because it's not in...
In Marona.
Right. Right.
Good.
We want a clear consensus.
Yeah, well, it'll be on our next agenda to accept, but I don't think that you have any problem moving ahead at this point.
Right.
Thank you. I want to also mention, Mr. Featherman, just to be ready to work with the process.
Thanks, Larry. There you go. Thank you. Okay, what we'll do is we'll just take a couple of minute break so you can leave and you don't have, if you want to, of course, you're welcome to stay and sit through our business, but we'll take a couple minutes pause.
I gotta check and drop off.
And allow whoever would like to leave an opportunity to do that, so we'll just check back in about three minutes.
Right.
Thank you. And we're gonna move on the agenda from the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary under minutes. May I have a motion for items B1 through B3? B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of June 23rd, 2014. B2 is a motion to approve the budgetary transfers for the month of June 2014. And B3 is a motion to approve the Board Secretary certification to the Board of Ed pursuant to the Administrative Code as listed, that no item account, line item account, has encumbrances and expenditures which exceed the line item appropriation. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Sicala?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Under Bills, may I have a motion for item B4, which is a motion to pay the bills that were listed in our packet? And they're listed here on the agenda for June 30th, 2014, and July 28th, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Sicala?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
And Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Under Business, may I have a motion for items B5 through B10? And B5 is a motion to approve the usage of the LRP parking lot by the Cedar Grove Senior Citizens Club on the dates listed. B6 is a motion to retroactively approve Stephen David Entertainment to use the high school principal's office, weight room, parking lot, and cafeteria for production purposes for the dates listed. B7 is a motion to approve Sunnyfield Corporation's Change Water Application Number 1 in the amount listed to provide the items that are listed for South End School. B8 is a motion, is a resolution, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the items as listed there in that resolution. And B9 is a motion to approve the lease agreements as listed with Stewart Business Systems for cop emissions. And there's one more. B10, motion to approve the disposal of Social Studies Department textbooks as listed below. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved. Second.
Hearing none, may I have roll call, please?
Mr. Sicala?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
And I believe we have a superintendent's report this evening.
We do. Thank you, Mr. Sicala. Just want to get you up to date on some of the activities that have been going on this summer. We have had a tremendously busy summer, tremendously productive summer, and I want to share some of those highlights with you. We recently met on July 29th with the County QSAC Committee, that's the Quality Single Accountability Continuum. It's basically a monitoring device that the counties have to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do in our public schools. We earned perfect scores in two areas, personnel and fiscal management. We earned a 95 percent in operations, 76 percent in governance, and we fell short in instruction and program. We see this as an opportunity, for within each challenge, there is exactly that. So our administrative team has been busy all of this past school year and this summer. We will report back to the board at our next regular meeting, specific to the District Improvement Plan and the Long Term Plan relative to many of the initiatives we already have in place relative to QSAC's evaluation of our district. So more on that at the August 26th meeting. Relative to that, Common Core alignment initiatives are ongoing this summer. We're working very hard on the Daily Five, the Cafe approach, K through 5. As you're aware, Common Core alignment, the shifts therein, grades K through 5, are critically important to the success of our children. So Mrs. DiMatteo, Ms. Dyer, myself, as well as many of our K through 5 teachers have been working on implementing the new, basically the new classroom that we'll have K through 5. I mean, the Daily Five is a vehicle through which the Common Core will be delivered to our kids. We're very excited about the changes. Our teachers have been provided with professional development throughout all the past school year, and as I've said, it's continued throughout the summer. And so we'll have a full report on that at our next meeting as well. Specific to that, our Report Card Committee is wrapping up its recommendations. Again, when you're realigning to the Common Core, it comes with many changes, many positive effective changes. So the report cards that we're going to be issuing K through 4 will have a very different look to them come September. So we're, we'll be presenting an idea where trimesters will be in play as opposed to the traditional quarterly marking period grades. And I think that you'll find the information that these new report cards provide is much more specific to how your child is doing in the classroom. So we'll present that as well. How about a quick update on district personnel and staffing? We've hired a new math teacher. We've made recommendations for a new English teacher, a new history teacher, all at the high school. We have a new physical education teacher at the high school. We've hired new coaches. Memorial Middle School, we've hired a new math teacher there as well and a new social worker. We also have a new part-time secretary. North End, we will welcome a new LLD Resource Room teacher. And North End and South End, we will have a new reading specialist shortly. How about facilities updates? We've been very busy in the area of facilities at our high school. We've painted the lockers in the upper B wing. They look great. Mr. Mangili can't wait to unveil what promises to be a spectacular grand opening. We're also working on the lockers in the boys' team room. Our men are currently putting a fresh coat of paint in there. We're gonna touch on those walls as well. It's amazing what some elbow grease and a little bit of attention to detail makes. I mean, that boys' locker room, albeit still in modest shape, is gonna look great. The door installation at the media center is complete. They went in there, they did an excellent job. It was clean, it was neat. So we're looking forward to nearly tripling our capacity in the media center, which will help with park testing, as well as all other kinds of media center presentations. The asbestos abatement project at the high school is pending. First week of August, we'll touch on the nurses' office, the faculty bathroom and lounge. Various rooms at the high school are being painted, the athletic office, the child study team room, as well as some other spaces. South End, we've had the boiler removed, the asbestos abated, the new floor tiles are going in. I mean, the changes are many. LRP, we've had our second floor renovated with new carpets. Asbestos was abated there as well. We look forward to getting back up there as early as next week. I think that about wraps it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on the agenda from the Office of the Superintendent of Schools, under Personnel, may I have a motion for S1 through S18? S1 is a motion to approve the superintendent's report. S2 is a motion to approve Thomas Jones, high school phys ed teacher, at the salary listed therein. S3 is a motion to approve Colleen Bulger, Memorial Middle School social worker, at the salary as set forth therein. S4 is a motion to approve Charlotte Gavaria, high school English teacher, at the salary set forth therein. S5 is a motion to approve Merrill Burl, North End LLD Resource Room teacher, at the salary as set forth therein. S6 is a motion to approve Thomas Jones as JV boys' basketball coach for a stipend as set forth therein. S7 is a motion to approve Victoria DeGeralamo, a South End first grade maternity leave teacher, at the salary set forth therein. S8 is a motion to accept the resignation of Lisa Williams as paraprofessional at the high school. S9 is a motion to approve Lisa Williams, Williams MMS School Part-Time Secretary at the salary set forth therein. S10 is a motion to approve Sandra Godiosi for the position of paraprofessional at a salary change as set forth therein. S11 is a motion to approve Steve Adams as assistant football coach for the stipend as set forth therein. S12 is a motion to accept the resignation of Erica Saron, MMS English teacher, effective July 11th, 2014. S13 is a motion to rescind the stipend positions for the 2014-2015 school year as set forth therein.[1797.62] therein. S14 is a motion to approve the stipend positions for the 2014-2015 school year as set forth therein. S15 is a motion to reimburse the school-based volunteers for fingerprinting as set forth therein. S16 is a motion to approve the parents as set forth therein as school volunteers. S17 is a motion to authorize attendance at the events as set forth therein, and the cost is also set forth in that motion. S18 is a motion to approve the leave of absences as set forth therein. May I have a motion for those 18 items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, may I have roll call, please?
Mr. Sacala?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Ms. Dye?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Under policies and regulations, may I have a motion for S19, which is a motion to approve the policies as set forth in that item upon second reading. These are all policies that we reviewed at the last meeting, and Mr. Featherman gave us a detailed overview of each and every one of them. May I have a motion for that item, please?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Roll call, please?
Mr. Sacala?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Under curriculum, may I have a motion for S20 and S21? S20 is a motion to approve Heather Loretano to write curriculum for AP Statistics for the 2014-2015 school year. And S21 is a motion to approve curriculum rate of pay for Kevin Skoronic to conduct an HIB investigation for a total not to exceed $90. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please?
Mr. Sacala?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
And under contracts, may I have a motion for S22 through S27? S22 is a motion to approve the following contracts as listed for special ed students as recommended by the Director of Special Services. S23 is a motion to approve the parent transportation contract as set forth therein. S24 is a motion to approve the parent transportation contract for the student set forth therein. S25 is a motion to approve the parent transportation contract for the student set forth therein. S26 is a motion to approve the bus transportation contract for the student as set forth in that item. And S27 is a motion to approve the settlement agreement between the CG Board of Ed and the parents of the student listed therein as recommended by the superintendent for the time period of April 7th through October 10th, 2014. May I have a, a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Just so the board is, is clear on S27, that's the agreement that I spoke to everyone about individually, and I think that I, that I filled everyone in. We didn't talk about it today in executive, but is everyone, everyone knows what, what that item is, so we're, we're sure.
Now I do. I didn't, I just said to her, what's that?
Well, I figured, because we didn't, we didn't get a chance to talk about it in executive.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Sacala?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
And Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
The meeting is open to the public for comment on items either on or off the agenda. Hearing none, close that portion of the meeting. And our next meeting, for real this time, is going to be August 26th, 2014, right, Mr. Featherman?
We're sticking to it.
That's going to be here in the North End Media Center, 7:00 PM, executive, for executive session, and 8:00 PM regular meeting, followed by our first meeting in September is September 9th, 2014, North End Media Center, 7:00 PM for executive, 8:00 PM for the regular meeting.